Well, welcome. It's getting near the end of the silly season. We've had each of the candidates on for their one-on-one. Tonight, we're bringing everybody together, same questions. Won't get through as many with five out of the six candidates here. But we'll go through the same questions and give you a chance to look at each of the candidates one more time. As always, I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate. My hat is tipped to all five, or six candidates, who have stood up and said they're willing to help out the kids in Milford. This election position, as I've said before, to me is the most important because when I was in, when I was in Milford with a kid in high school, I was lucky to get two hours a night with either daughter. These people are going to dictate what our kids do for six to eight hours a day. And the policies and courses and what they do to set themselves up for the rest of their lives. So, we took a random number guess and we started out with Jim being the first one. So, we'll do an intro and then go around.
My name is Jim Legor. I'm candidate reelection for a school committee. And I'm happy to be on the show. Thank you very much. My value proposition, looking for an opportunity to come back for another term.
Why don't you hold till we do the intros?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Michael, introduction.
Good evening, Al. My name is Mike Visconti, lifelong resident of Milford, very interested in volunteering to help our town.
Thank you. Tarek?
Thanks for having me on the show, Al. My name is Tarek Miranda. I'm on the personnel board and I just want to give back to town that's given me so much.
RJ?
Hey, my name is RJ Sheedy. I am running for one of the two seats on Milford School Committee. Lifelong Milford resident, went to Milford Schools all the way through Shining Star to graduation. And just like everybody else here, I just want to give back to our town.
And Justin?
Hi, Al. Thank you for writing me on tonight. I'm running so that I can hit the ground running.
Just start with an intro.
Well, that's a little bit of it. I'm like everyone here, I'm a born and raised Milfordian. And I came back to the town so that my wife and I could raise our family here because I had such a positive experience going through the public schools myself and I want to make sure that the next generation of kids have that same experience.
Perfect. Now, you've all been on the show. You know the first and last question will always be, Jim, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
I'm looking for an opportunity for reelection. My value proposition, I think, over the last three years is collaboration and cross-functional engagement. So, having the opportunity to work not only with the full school, with the full school committee, but also on several subcommittees, including FinCom and our involvement with FinCom and budget, IT being another one, marketing being another one, policy being another one. I'm looking for an opportunity to continue to give back. I'm looking for an opportunity to continue to move the district in a positive direction and improve post-secondary outcome.
Michael, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
You should vote for me because I am, I am very interested in serving on the school committee because I want to start the process of returning our schools to a level that we experienced years ago. I know that I can't do it all by myself, but if I'm elected, I can start the process and hopefully others will follow my lead and join me so we can start the, complete the process of returning our school district to the level that we, we once had.
Thank you. Tarek, why should I vote for you?
Al, you should vote for me because out of the six people running for school committee, I represent a big part of the town, as in the kids who are the big demographic that takes up a majority of the school system. Forty-four percent of them is ESL. And I represent that huge population. And I want to help them excel. And when they excel, they'll bring everyone else above them up because that's where our scores are going down and that's what I want to focus on.
Thank you. RJ, why should I vote for you?
So, a few reasons why I think you should vote for me as a Milford resident. First and foremost, I'm about to graduate from Worcester State with a degree in communications. And the whole way that I got started in that career path was by filming the school committee meetings for a year and a half as a student. So, for a year and a half as a student, I just sat there and I listened and I watched the school committee and I learned all about their roles, their functions, and just how they, you know, at the end of the day, shaped the six, seven, eight hours that I'm in that building for. So, I'm doing it for that. And also, you know, within the last, you know, few years after doing those meetings, I got pretty involved with town. I started a local cable talk show here where I interviewed educators, political people, people of interest, business owners. And I've also became a town meeting member. So, you know, I'm, I really love Milford. I'm really invested in this town, both, you know, where I live with my actions. And I just love an opportunity to serve on the school committee and give back to the school system that gave so much to me.
Thank you. Justin, why should I vote for you?
So, in addition to what I said earlier, what having been a born, bred, Milfordian, I bring a unique skillset to the conversation in that I have, I've made education my career. I studied it in college. I did substitute teaching here in Milford. Now, for the last about year and a half, I've been on the school improvement council at the high school. And I've spent the last three years working in the superintendent's office in Sudbury Public Schools, directly supporting both the superintendent and the school committee. So, I have, I've heard a lot of different arguments that they're having and a lot of different discussions they're having. And I want to bring a lot of their good ideas back here to Milford. This community did a lot for me when I was going through the public school system, especially when my sister got sick. And I want to make sure that we preserve that community feel and that we really make sure that all the students have an equal opportunity to succeed. So, those are my real reasons why I'm asking for your vote tonight.
And I'll apologize that, as you've noticed, I'm going to try and keep this on track because with five of us, I'm going to give everybody a fair chance. So, when I ask the questions, try and keep yourself to a minutish on each answer.
Of course.
If it goes a little too long, the gong will come out. Michael, you get the next question. On school committee, what do you think the biggest challenge you would face would be?
In order to answer that question, let's keep in mind what the function of the school committee is. The basic function of the school committee are budgeting and policy setting. I have a degree in management with a minor in finance. I have prepared and administered numerous multimillion-dollar budgets for numerous organizations, including financial institute, large financial institutions. And I believe that's what's, one of the things that separates me from the other candidates. I, as I said, I know budgets. I've lived budgets for the last 30 years. And I can be extremely helpful in keeping our school budget in check, keeping in mind that for the last 10 years, our school budget has increased many times the inflation rate. We need to keep our budget in check without losing any of our services. And I believe I can manage that and work to make that happen.
Thank you. Eric, what would you believe will be your biggest challenge on the school committee?
I'd say the biggest challenge would be getting everyone on the same page, or at least three people. I think that's always the hard part is conveying your ideas and getting people to accept that they're, the idea is it's going to fix everything or at least set us in the right direction.
What do you think would be the first main issue you'd face that you need to get? And for the viewers, school committee is a world of four. You have seven members. So, any idea that you want passed requires four votes, just like we talked in the FinCom about a world of eight because we have 15 members. So, you have to get seven other members to agree with you to get a successful vote. But what do you think the first area, your first real challenge would be?
I think we need to, getting them to reinforce the English language learners and the students with more English and math classes. I say we take away an elective and give them another English or math, if the ones who are struggling, of course. I think that'd be a very radical idea, maybe. But I'll push for it because I think that'll set us going forward.
RJ, if you're on the school committee, what do you think your first big challenge would be?
I'm going to have to agree with Tarek on this one. I think a big problem with the school, or a big issue that the school system faces is our EL population. I love the diversity in Milford. Milford has been home of like a diverse population for a long time, whether it was the Italians, the Irish, the Portuguese, the Brazilians. And now it's, you know, another group's turn to be new to Milford. And I think that we need to support them every single way we can. Milford's getting about one new EL student enrolled in our schools per week. And our at-home language where people, basically, 10 years ago, 17% of our students spoke a different language at home. Today, it's over a third of them who speak a different language at home. And I don't think, I don't see any data that's showing that we're slowing that EL population growth down. As it is, I was looking around Stacy the other day with the principal, and she was nice enough to show me one of the EL rooms upstairs in the seventh grade wing. And there is not room in there for one more desk. So, I think we really need to invest into these programs, into these students, and just, you know, help them better assimilate themselves into our community.
Justin, on the school committee, what do you think your first big challenge would be?
Well, I think the guiding vision for the school committee going forward has to be the pursuit of an equitable education for all students. And this bleeds into almost everything that the district is, is doing. The idea behind equitable education is making sure that all students have the personalized, tailored supports that they need to succeed. So, that, that covers a little bit with what Tarek and RJ were saying about EL learners having different assessment supplies that they're going to need, different and additional services that they'll need. But this also means we're looking at our facilities and making sure that the long-term, long-range planning committee has the right idea in mind about what we need to do with the high schools, Stacy Middle School, and all the schools in the district going forward. Because we don't want our students learning, being distracted from their education by subpar facilities. But it also means looking at school start times because in 2014, the American Academy of Pediatrics released studies, or a statement that said directly, "We need to have high schools and middle schools starting at eight-thirds a year later." Now, there's a lot of things that go into that, but if that's really what our high schoolers and middle schoolers need to thrive and to meet their basic biological needs, then we need to have a conversation about how we achieve that. So, really, my big challenge and what I'm going to be pushing for on the school committee is making sure that we have an equitable education for all students.
Thank you. Jim, you have insight. You're there now. If you continue, or when, I don't know what the politically.
When if, yeah.
When if you continue on the school committee, what do you see being the biggest challenge you'll face?
I think it's a multi-front, multi-component initiative. I think we need to continue to push the brand forward. We need to continue to develop outbound messaging and continue the optic of what we're currently doing. I will pivot a little bit off of some of the sentiment that's come from my right. I totally agree that we need to look for and continue to push ancillary curriculum. That's why we are working with, we are, we are working on programs such as job share programs, intern program, internship programs, additional curriculum such as MacWick, automotive, hotel, restaurant management, manufacturing, and constructions management. And in addition to that, you know, when you, when you look at how we want to continue to make post-secondary outcomes more meaningful and compelling, I also think we need to continue to focus on the lower grades for areas where we're looking for gaps, particularly in MCAS testing, which is why we are bringing in MCAS specialists, not only in math and science, but also in English, to improve the outcomes there. And then looking for ways to move forward with enrichment exercises.
Thank you. Tarek, you start the next round, I believe.
I think so.
Are kids in Milford getting a good education?
Yes. I'd say kids in Milford are getting a good education. It's just what they make of it themselves is what really is the outcome of that education.
RJ, are our kids getting a good education in Milford?
Absolutely, yes. I told you this last week. I think Milford is giving our students a fantastic quality education. And without Milford Schools, I wouldn't be where I am today. So, and I think everybody here on the panel today can say exactly the same thing. So, you went to Milford, right, Jim?
Yes, I did.
Good, good. Yeah. Go ahead.
Yes, I did. I don't want to give you the date, but I did.
Fair enough, fair enough. But I think, you know, I think we can all say together that Milford does provide a good quality education and that we are pretty successful in our lives thanks to that.
The one thing you can be safe, nobody got out of Milford High earlier than me. That was the first class out of the new Milford High. So, no matter what date you threw, it's got to be after mine.
Yeah.
If you came out of the Milford High School, the new one. Justin, are kids in Milford getting a good education?
I think they are getting a good education and it's getting better. In addition to what Jim was saying earlier about the high school offering more programs to help non-college-bound students, we're also at the lower grades, we're starting to focus on social, emotional learning more. So, we're educating the whole student. And so, I think if we start to enrich that area of the curriculum more and help our teachers get more professional development in that area, we're going to see the students get a better education that really reflects the entire student.
Jim?
Yep.
Kids in Milford getting a good education?
I believe that. So, and I can, I know we spoke in depth about the school committee perspective and then we spoke about our personal perspective because I can take my school committee hat off and tell you that I have an 18-year-old that's graduated that got into five out of five colleges and I have a 14-year-old. Thank you very much. Good job, Josh.
Good for him.
Awesome, Josh.
I also have a, an eighth grader going into freshman year. So, I'm upfront with the curriculum, not only from a school committee perspective, but also I can take that hat off and look at it through a parental lens. However, with that being said, I think that there's always room for improvement. We are looking for ways, as I mentioned before, to expand curriculum at the high school level, but then also pivoting off of what Justin said, we're looking for ways to build enrichment and other activities within the lower grades.
Now, did you ask Josh for permission to use his name? Or you're going to be in trouble?
I'm going to start, I've dropped his name a few times.
I'm going to say.
I'm going to have to start giving him a, like, you know, some kind of royalty pretty soon.
When I use my daughter's name, I got home and it was, "Dad, why are you calling me out?"
At some point, it's going to work adversely, yeah.
Michael, are kids in Milford getting a good education?
It does not matter what I think. What's important are the facts. Rather than listen to categorical emotional statements from people who say that Milford students are getting a great education, let's look at the facts. According to the three most respected school ranking organizations in the country, Milford is in the bottom 20% of the non-performing schools. In the, in the state, in the state, the bottom 20%. That tells me that, how can the, the students be getting a good education if, if the Milford Schools are in the bottom 20% of non-performing schools? We need to get Milford into the top 20% of the performing schools. We need to, we need to compete with our surrounding towns. We need to get the high school out of the Level Three and into a Level One category. Hopkin, like Hopkinson, which is at Level One, Holliston at Level Two. There's no reason in the world why Milford should not be Level One. And I will work hard. I will work as hard as anybody you know to get Milford back to a Level One ranking.
Okay, we're going to get back to that.
Sure, yeah.
Subject in a second, but.
I don't think rankings are a thing anymore. I think they changed the classification of how they rate the schools now. Is that correct, Jim?
No, they do rank by levels one through four. And as a matter of fact, I believe we have gone back to Level Two.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we're going to get to that. But RJ, I'm going to ask a basic question and then a sub-question. Number one, are we spending enough on education per student? And number two, would you consider those use of profanity?
I know what the profanity is, yes.
You know what the profane words are in my dictionary.
Sure, definitely.
Two and a half override and dead exclusion.
Yeah, I'm going to take care of the first one real quick. Two and a half override, no, never. I never want to do that to our residents. I don't want to see their taxes go up. I don't want to see seniors get pressured out of their home. I don't want to see struggling young, young professionals in Milford have to move out of their apartments because they can't afford their rent anymore because everything's going up. I don't want to do anything like that. I don't want to do anything like that. Is, back to your original question, are we spending enough on our schools? I think our teachers and our students are doing everything they can with what they have. I do know that Milford is 20% less per pupil than the state average for spending. Personally, to me, that's not something that I want to celebrate, that we're spending 20% less than the state average. But also, that's something that, you know, I have to accept because, you know, Milford's paying, you know, a huge chunk of that education. I feel like the state could always be paying more to it. But yeah, overall, I think the schools are doing exactly what they can with the funds they have.
Justin, same two questions. Are we spending enough on our children? And would you consider profane words like two and a half override and dead exclusion?
Well, in the spending question, you always need to account for how it's being spent. Targeted spending is incredibly important in education. You could, speaking to the point about per pupil spending, that figure's a little tricky to work with because you could throw a Cadillac at every student and you'd jack that per pupil spending number right up. But every student having a Cadillac isn't going to help their education at all. So, you want to make sure that when you're spending money, that it's being invested wisely and in the right places. So, if we are having a, for example, at the high school, we recently had an issue where there weren't enough counselors and there weren't enough multilingual counselors. So, the high school went out and hired, I think it was a trilingual counselor, somebody who's fluent in English, Portuguese, and Spanish. That's a good, sound investment. That's money well-spent because it's going to directly impact student growth. So, whenever you talk about spending, that's really what you need to keep in mind is how we're spending it, where we're spending it, how the money's being applied. Now, if you're going to go to talk about proposing two and a half overrides, you really, it's really on a, as-needed basis. You can't have that conversation until you're in the situation. What's driven us there? Was it poor budgeting in the past? Is it some unexpected expense going forward? Did some big HVAC system break or something? Because if that happens, you obviously need to come up with the money somewhere. But obviously, I don't want to see a two and a half override go through. That's never, that's never anyone's MO. I think we're all going to agree on that going around the table. But you do, you never want to paint yourself into a corner and say nothing can ever happen.
Jim?
Right.
Are we spending enough? And would you consider a two and a half override or dead exclusion, even though those words are profanity in my dictionary?
Yeah. I don't think, and so historically, we've never had to do that. I don't think that there's a, an opportunity or a situation where we would need to do that moving forward. I will say that, you know, having, being on the FinCom subcommittee and the budget subcommittee, I will say that we are working very collaboratively and very proactively with FinCom. I have direct conversations with Mike Scavie. I will be, I'm sorry, I will be having more direct conversations with Mike Scavie as well as Chris Moran. And we are putting together a more collaborative roadmap to increase per pupil spending incrementally over the next couple of years. That, that's a lot of discussion that we've been having at the subcommittee level. We are spending lower than the state average. That is true. However, we're, we're looking for ways to rectify that. But again, going back to the latter part of the question, having an override or a dead exclusion is, is not the, I don't think is a suitable way to get there.
Michael, are we spending enough money in our children's education? And if not, would you consider a two and a half override or a dead exclusion?
Once again, let's look at the facts. Contrary to what's been said, we are spending higher than the state average. We spend round numbers, about $14,000 per student in our schools, which is above the state average. Plenty of money to get the job done. We have one of the lowest student-to-teacher ratios in the state at about 14 students, 14 to one. One of the lowest in the state. There is no reason in the world why, why we should argue that we're shorthanded or do not have enough money. Two and a half override, out of the question. No reason for it. There is plenty of money. The money has to be placed in, in the right, in the right areas. We need to improve our core, our basic core academics, reading, writing, and arithmetic, if you will. And by that, I mean, I don't mean, I know arithmetic has changed. I'm talking about math, I'm talking about science, and I'm talking about writing. Now, when I say writing, I'm not necessarily restricting it to writing cursive. By writing, I mean, you know, whether it's done on, on a keyboard or whether it's printed. I'm talking about, I'm talking about sentence structure. I'm talking about paragraphs. I'm talking about things of that nature. We need to make sure our students are able to do that. Ask 10 graduating students to give you an example of a dangling, dangling podestable and, and see if they can give you that answer. I'm telling, I'm going to go out on a limb here and I'm going to tell you that, I'm going to say eight out of the 10 will not be able to give you an example of a dangling podestable. These are things that our students have to know if they want to succeed. And there is no reason in the world why they should not be being taught that and not understand that fully. English learners, we need, certainly, we need to make sure everybody gets a quality education consistent with their ability. Couple of years ago, last year, the school committee came to the FinCom wanting more money because of the influx of English learning, English language learners. Finance committee, sure, have all the money you want. Hundreds of thousands of dollars was given to the school committee to solve the problem that they said existed. Well, how can you say the problem still exists when you were given hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix the problem? The money is there. Maybe we have the wrong people doing the job. I don't know. The money is there. The equipment is there. Get the job done. Let's look at an example. Lexington, Lexington Schools. Lexington has the second highest percentage of incoming English language learners in the state. The second highest percentage. Yet routinely, year after year, in the top five, ranked in the top five schools in the state. North Quincy High, the number, has the first highest percentage of incoming English language learners, routinely ranked in the top 10 in the state. If they can do it, there is no reason that Milford can't do it with the money they have and the student-to-teacher ratio that we have.
Thank you. Tarek, are we spending enough on our students' education? And if not, would you consider those words, two and a half override and dead exclusion?
I'll never consider two and a half override or dead exclusion. And everyone can hold me to it if elected. And are we spending enough on our students? I believe we are spending enough on our students, as Mike just said. I just, I, I'll agree with him again that the money's just not being used appropriately.
Okay. I guess, Justin, you get the next one. There's been some controversy, confusion about an article in the local media, which stated we want a new high school in five years and then a new school every three to five years thereafter. Your opinion?
Well, I think it's important to start considering exactly where this originated. In 2018, I believe, NESDEC released a report commissioned by the school committee in Milford Public Schools that did an analysis of the state of all our physical plants. And what it concluded was that the high school and the middle school particularly are in very rough shape. There are parts of the building that are original to the night, to its construction in the 1970s that have not been maintained well. The HVAC system especially is on its last, I don't say its last breath, but it's not in great shape. There are windows that are leaking heat constantly. The building itself, just architecturally, saps heat out because of the big open air hallways. All the heat just rises. That, that's hugely inefficient for, for us as a taxpay, a tax base. But additionally, just, there's, it's a security issue and it's distracting our kids from receiving a good education. Additionally, you look at the way we want to move the district forward, we're offering shop classes again for the first time in decades. I know I didn't have it when I went through. We're offering shop classes in computer labs. So, there's sawdust flying into the computers just because we don't have enough space. We're teaching science classes outside of science labs because we don't have the space. So, we do need to take a serious look in this town about how we're going to address that, whether it's the renovation, reconstruction, whatever it may be. We, we're not providing our students at the high school level with an adequate educational experience in terms of facilities. And the NESDEC report also touched on the other schools as well. Stacy especially, saying that the renovation that we did in 1994 isn't holding up all that well. It's been 25 years, but it's been a hard 25 years. So, we have some big decisions to make with Stacy as well. And then sometime after that, just because the Brookside and Memorial are getting older unto themselves and will only be even older by the time we tackle Stacy and the high school, we're going to have to look into those as, as well. So, it's just, there's a lot of work and a lot of conversations that need to be had around town about the state of our facilities. And that's one of the discussions I'm really interested in having.
Now, I have to ask, is it concerning that a school every five to three years, you know, at 50 million bucks a school? How would we deal with that?
Well, this is what we, it's, as I was saying, where there is a long-term, long-range planning committee, that's going to be holding a meeting next month. planning committee, that's going to be holding a meeting next month. I look forward to hearing what they're proposing specifically there. We don't know yet. But at the same time, that does ring me as a little aggressive, but we need to just remember, this has a direct impact on the education we're able to provide to the kids, whether you're talking about the existing classes, cramming kids into spaces where they don't fit, or holding, not being able to expand our curriculum into other areas because we don't have the space. So we just really need to start thinking about, again, long-term planning.
Jim, we read in the paper.
Yeah.
New high school in, within five years, and a new school three to five years after that, new school three to five years after that.
Yeah. I mean, so I'm not going to say that, I mean, some of the stuff that was echoed is true. I mean, we have some space requirements issues. We do have a long-range, a long-range strategic plan for the locations. The high school is obviously next up. We're talking about a multimillion-dollar renovation to the tune of 150, potentially $200 million, you know, remodel. The town is not going to substantiate a school every three to five years. We don't have the money for that. That's just, that's just straight up out of the question. And we have to look at it by age. The high school is definitely up. We are doing hallway triage in some areas. But, you know, what, does it impact the educational experience? That, you know, I think that's a gray area for debate. However, there is some truth to that, and we are budgeting for it. We do have a long-range planning committee for it, and we will be talking to the FinCom about facilitating that.
There was some deja now when I walked down to the cafeteria and I saw a leak.
Yeah.
It reminded me of 1974 when we first moved in there.
I mean, it's, there's no question that the building is old. I mean, go up there in the summer and you, you know, it's significant. You know, there are HVAC challenges in there. The building is a bunker, you know? It's a concrete slab. So there are challenges there, but the question becomes, how do you work collaboratively with FinCom in order to solve them? You know, considering that FinCom also has to support the town and the municipalities and everything else, so.
Michael, the building plan.
Once again, let's look at it by example. Up until a few years ago, a very few years ago, the town of Wayland was operating out of a high school that was built in the 60s and yet consistently, every year, ranked in the top five high schools in the state. It's not so much the quality of the tools as it is the ability of the instructors. There's no reason in the world why we should be using the lack or the depreciation of facilities as an excuse for not educating our students. Before we can have, before we can decide what our long-range building plans are going to be, we need a long-range educational plan. Cat before, the horse before the cat. You can't do it the other way. As far as I know, there's no concrete, long-range educational plan in place. That's what we need to do first. By the way, I am, I have overseen many, many preventive maintenance programs, and I've administered those programs to make sure that they were adhered to. It's one thing to have a preventive maintenance plan, but is it being adhered to? I knew, we talked about this at an earlier time. Don't come to me 20 years from now and tell me that we need a new woodland school because that, the woodland school we just built for 60 mil is falling apart. Lack of preventive maintenance. That's what, that's what's happening to the high school, not to mention the fact that it was built on a swamp, which doesn't help things. But that's gone. That's, nothing we can do about that. The roof was, the roof was history two years after the school was built. What can I tell you? Need a preventive maintenance plan, a strong preventive maintenance plan that needs to be adhered to. I can help get that done by a vast experience in doing that.
The idea that was floated of a high school in five years and schools three to five years after that, your opinion?
Once again, I would have to get into a little more deeply. But as I said, that example I cited from Wayland, top five, year after year. Let's look at Boston Latin, number one high school, year after year in the state. I don't want to tell you how old their facilities are. Number 48 ranked in the, in the country, Boston Latin. If they can do it, there is no reason that Milford cannot do it with the facilities we have properly maintained before we start talking about tearing stuff down and building new facilities to the tune of 150 million bucks.
Okay. Tarek, we saw in the local media, somebody floating an idea that we should have a new high school in five years and then two middle schools or middle school and elementary three to five years after that. Your opinion?
I think it's just impossible from the town's perspective. We just can't afford that. And I didn't really have a trouble, any troubles from pre-K through 12. I didn't really see anything falling apart. And trust me, if it was falling apart, I would have been the first one to email Mr. Tremblay and let him know there was a problem because I have no problem doing that. So I don't, so maybe if the problems are arising now, then, as Mike had said, preventative maintenance has gone down the past few years, or maybe it's been going down for a longer time. Last year, I did bring up a roof, leaking roof problem over the A Wing in the high school. It's just, I don't think it's feasible for the town, and I don't, don't think a new high school's needed in the next five years.
RJ?
Sure. So I think the conversation should start, but again, we can't afford that as a town to build a new school right now. We just spent 60 million on woodland, and it's a work of art, honestly. But like, you know, we don't have another 150, 200 million laying around to build a new school. I think we should definitely start those conversations now onto what's next for our public schools, whether it's, you know, renovating some parts of Stacy or renovating some parts of high school or, you know, whatever, you know, the community decides. But, you know, I know that conversation's beginning at FinCom already, which is great. And, you know, we should just keep those conversations going for a future day. But, you know, right now, no, we don't, we can't afford, I don't think, a new school or anything.
Now, I started with you.
Mm-hmm.
So the next question goes to Jim. How ironic. School choice. I mean, I'm sorry about this. It's just, it's the order of the questions. School choice has been a hot topic in Milford.
Yes.
The facts say more are leaving than are coming in. So it's costing the town money. What do we do to fix school choice?
So when we first talked about this three years ago, we, we really decided we were going to put together optics around rebranding or branding the district. And we have done that through our Subcommittee initiatives. We've put together outbound messaging in a number of different formats. We communicate them through a number of different outlets. There's, we do them through social media, we do them through traditional email, print messaging. We partner with Milford TV, we partner with WMRC or 101.1, 101.3 FM in order to communicate the branding and the messaging of what we're, what is going on at the high school. That was, I think, one of our biggest issues that we had three years ago, was communicating the good that was going on. We allowed a negative narrative to occur prior to that, and I think that helped drive some of the school choice number out. Now, people will, people will, people will leave the district for a variety of different things. You have people leaving because, you know, they have children that they feel are enriched that are not getting the enrichment exercises that they feel that they should be getting in the lower grades. And you have people who, as we talked about on your show, prefer a more homogeneous educational experience. So you are going to get people transitioning out. However, we have stemmed that number off in the last three years, and it has actually reverted. So we have limited the amount of school choice, and we have actually seen a school choice in number that has been substantial. So moving forward, our plan is to continue with the outbound messaging, outbound messaging that we have. And in order to continue to move that forward, we are looking for options where we're bolstering our school showcases. We have done administrative showcases with Milford TV and, and I always say WMRC, in order to continue to communicate that message out to the public. I think it's just a continued, it's a continued effort in order to communicate what goes on within the district on a daily basis. And it's a continued effort to get our administrators out in front of the public so they can see the vision or hear the vision and identify the roadmap.
Michael, school choice.
School choice. The best way to rebrand our school is, and stop the, the school choice, school choicing out, is to show people that we can turn out a product that is superior to the surrounding towns. And right now, we cannot do that. Milford is being outperformed by every single surrounding town, including Hope Deal, Medway, Millis, Hawkinson, Franklin. When we can show people that we are churning out a, we are, we are graduating students with a higher quality education than those schools are, you will not find people leaving. You will find people banging down the door trying to get in. That's what we need to do. I don't know what the big mystery is about why we're, why we're losing students. Turn out a better product, the students will stay, and more will want to come here, even if we don't have the room for them. We can always turn them away, but we don't want to lose them. The more we lose, the more money it costs. It's costing the taxpayers millions of dollars because these students are choicing out to schools where they can get a higher quality education. Go right over the hill to Hope Deal and get a higher quality education. And that's just not me speaking. That's according to, once again, the three most respected school ranking organizations in the country.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Wait till we're done, then we'll come back. Let each person.
Okay.
Turn out a better product, solve the school choice problem.
Tarek, school choice.
The numbers speak for themselves. We're losing more than we get in, and we have to lower how much we lose. How we do that? Well, we have to truly find out why they're leaving. Is it, is it academics? Is it harassment? Is it bullying? Do they just not like it? Is it private school? I think we truly have to find out why those kids are leaving, and then that's how you tackle the problem afterwards. Like, I couldn't tell you what it was because there's no data saying this is the problem. This saying we have the encompassing problem, but then we have to get solutions to it.
RJ, school choice.
Sure. So I think the district's, like Jim said, is doing a great job, getting on Milford TV, getting on WMRC, getting positive news press in the Daily News and the Town Cry, but all the positives that our students are achieving and all the great things that our district is doing to move us forward. But of course, there is still an issue of people choicing out. And at the end of the day, you know, maybe they're choicing out for services, maybe other districts are giving them. I can't explain to you why people are choicing out. I can just hypothesize as to why it's happening. But if one of those hypotheses is that they're choicing out because other districts are giving them better services, well, then I think we, as a schools committee, should find out what those services are better and then invest in those services at home if they're leaving because somebody else has a better special education program, if they're leaving for, you know, for, you know, better athletes, athletic programs someplace else. I feel like we can invest in our school systems and those programs as to why people are leaving to welcome them back. At a certain point, there's going to be some people who, you know, speak with their families and say, look, we do want a more homogeneous experience. And I feel like at that point, we just have to say, you know, that's your choice. We wish you the best of luck, and we should just focus on the students that we have and focus on the school that we have to make it better.
Justin, your opinion on what's happening with school choice?
I think the most important thing to remember in this discussion is that marketing is all well and good, but you can only put so much lipstick on a pig. If we're not delivering a curriculum and an educational experience that rivals what other districts have to offer, then we're not going to keep those students in Milford. We need to increase the depth and breadth of the curriculum we're offering. And I think we're starting to do that at the high school level especially, where we're talking about adding in these biomed programs and these banking programs. And I fully support Principal Ottland's attempts to reconfigure the school day to allow internal, ah, sorry, internship and externship opportunities and apprenticeship opportunities during the school day for school credit. That, that'll make our students much more competitive when they leave the high school, whether they're going into college and they want, and they can apply those credits possibly towards college to get out early. That's what I did. Or if they're going right into the workforce, if they have actual hands-on experience in their trade, that's going to be tremendous for them. And that's going to make future generation students get pause before they leave us to go someplace like BBT or Tri County or any of the other vocational schools. But we can also try and keep them in the district with, as opposed to going to someplace like Hope Deal or Millis or any of these others, if you increase the depth of the curriculum. Give, empower the superintendent to hire teachers that have the very best educations and we find different ways to incentivize getting new teachers that have new ideas during the hiring season. So I really think that that's the key, is that we need to increase the depth and breadth of our curriculum going forward if we want to really turn around our school choice numbers.
Now, Jim, if you have a general question, I welcome it. But we're going to give everybody then a chance to chime in on your question.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So I just wanted, I have to say this as a, as a parent in terms of what Mike had said initially. So I've got two kids in the district. You talk about a quality product. I've got one kid that applied for early action, got into five out of five of the most competitive colleges in the, in the country and is playing a collegiate sport at a D2 level. I've got another kid that tested in the top 5% in the state for math and science in eighth grade. So I'd ask you to give me some detailed feedback on where you feel the curriculum is failing. Because I can give you actual, I can give you actual tactical examples, but I'm not hearing tactical examples from you.
Michael?
Well, certainly, there's always going to be a few on the.
Well, so, time out. A few meaning what? Like three, four? Because I can give you three, 400 examples.
Okay, give him a chance.
Of kids in my, in my child's bracket. I mean, if you're going to give me 2% to 3% as an example, then we can just move the question along. But if you're going to tell me that.
I'm not going to give you percentages under the example. I want to tell you is that there's, there's students on both ends of the curve, okay? There's always going to be a percentage on the, on the upper end of the curve that perform well.
Yes, but you're talking about a quality product.
Okay, okay. Give him a chance to answer.
Thank you. But you can't go to the farmer who has an apple orchard and have him show you five perfectly round shiny apples from one tree and then be convinced that he has the greatest orchard around when a large percentage of the rest of his apples have all wormholes in them. Sure, I can pick out five of the best apples and say I got the best orchid, which is what you did. You cannot operate that way.
But I can give you 54% of the orchid as being superior.
Superior.
That's your example.
But superior to what?
Superior to the other towns. I can tell you that our kids, Tarek being one of them, that are 3.0 and above, have gotten into every competitive college in the country. We've got kids at 2.5 and below that need additional curriculum in order to have post-secondary success when they graduate. You're telling me that we need to compete with Hawkinson, with Holliston. You're never going to compete with them. They don't have the same level of economic diversity. This isn't even about, this isn't even about ethnic diversity. This is about economic diversity and the effects of generational poverty on post-secondary outcome. That's what this conversation is about.
You're doing, you're doing exactly what I said you can't do.
Which is what?
You're showing me the shiniest apple in the orchard.
I'm telling you that I've got 1,000 shiny apples.
I'm a shiny apple.
RJ's a shiny apple.
Gentlemen, saying it. You said we were going to ask a question and give everybody a chance.
May I respond?
I retract the question then.
Saying it does not make it so. The facts, the facts are what counts.
Michael, we have three other members. Do any of you want to chime in on this question?
I'm all set.
I think they covered it all.
Okay, then we'll go on. One of the questions that always comes out in people's mind deals with security. You know, we're hearing that there's a lot of issues across the country with security. Do you feel Milford has a secure school system?
Well, I have not reviewed their security protocol, so I really can't not answer that intelligently. What I can tell you is that the times that I've been up at the high school, I've walked right in the back door through the cat, by the cafeteria and gym like I walked into my house. So if that says, if that is an example of the type of security we have, then based on that and that alone, and I don't think I should do that, we cannot base it on that one incident. But if we want to base it on that, then I'd say the security needs some improvement.
Okay, and how do you feel about the three-quarters of a million dollars that we just spent for making a SWAT team available? Does that help or?
It has to help. I'm not sure we needed to go to that extent. Once again, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the security protocol in place and study it to give you an intelligent answer.
Tarek, same question. How do you feel about the security in the school system and was the money well spent to develop our own SWAT team?
I'd say the money was well, well spent because if the money was, let's say it didn't happen, but it was brought up and it didn't happen, and something happened to the kids, everyone's going to say, why was the money spent? We don't need that. We don't want anything to happen to the kids. And the security protocols, I, I know the front desk attendant at the high school and And the security protocols, I, I know the front desk attendant at the high school and probably, I think every school, and they won't let me in. They've known me since I was in seventh, eighth grade. And they know me. They know, I mean, I mean no harm, and they won't let me in. And so I'd say, I'd say the kids are safe and I, knowing that the SWAT team can get, what's the response time they save? Four, five minutes? I think that's incredible.
The rationale, to put it in perspective, was we participated in the regional SWAT effort. And it took, I believe, on average, 40-some minutes from when we declared, you know, an emergency for the SWAT team to come together from the region. And yet, if I remember right, most shootings are done in six to 12 minutes. So what we had to deal with is we're going to have an incredibly well-trained, well-armed group of people showing up 30 minutes after everything's done.
Right.
So that was the reason, because I remember looking at Chris Moore and when we were talking about saying, if we don't approve this and something ever happens, how would we ever look at a mother or father again? So RJ, security and the SWAT, the Milford SWAT effort.
Sure. So I think our schools are safe. When I was a student there, just, you know, a short five years ago, just like Tarek, I felt very, very safe in my environment. I never questioned, you know, is something going to happen? You know, I always felt very, very safe there. I do think the SWAT team is one way to tackle that issue and, like you said, thank God we have it in case something happened.
Justin.
So I think this touches upon a little bit of the facilities discussion that we had earlier today, because Milford High School itself, they, just because of the way the building was constructed in 1970, security wasn't as big of an issue. The glass isn't the same glass they would build a school with today. The door locks aren't the same that they would use on a, on a door today. And the big, open courtyard is a liability unto itself. They put up a fence, but only so much good that can do. So when we go to renovate the high school, that's going to be one major thing that we should look at, is increasing the security of the building to prevent people from getting in and to keep our students safe. Now, from my experience in suburban public schools, there's also, you also, you should also keep in mind, there's three, three different groups you need to communicate with and teach how to handle any situation in order for it to operate effectively. You need to have an effective plan that the teachers understand, that the students understand, and that the parents understand. Each of those three groups play a critical role in making sure that any situation that does occur is handled properly and safely. You don't want students freaking out and calling their parents. You don't want parents showing up and making the situation even larger outside of a school. So really, you just want to make sure that you.
Thank you. Sorry, I got to cut you short. Jim, one minute.
No problem. Just going to pivot off of what Justin said. I mean, is there, is there a security issue? No, I don't think so. We have resource officers in the building. The SWAT team, again, I totally agree, you know, it was, I think it's something you have to do in today's day and age, you know, regardless of how it came together and the money is spent. I think it, I agree with what you said earlier. The local officials actually go over active shooter drills and protocol drills with the educators. So there is a plan, the teachers know what to do in case of emergency. There are a number of codes that are activated within the building, so the people know what to do if and when an emergency occurs.
Now, I'm going to have to enforce a one-minute rule on this question. Michael, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
You should vote for me. I would ask you to vote for me because my heart is in it. I have the talent, I have the education, I have the know-how, and I have the drive to start the process, as I said, of bringing our schools back up to the level that we once had. I cannot do it by myself, but if I am elected, I can start the process to make that happen. I have the education, I have the drive, and by the way, I cannot be bullied. And yes, I mean bullied. Bullying is not restricted to the students. Bullying also happens on boards and committees, okay? I cannot be intimidated by third parties who have a hidden ulterior motive for things they're doing. I'm a, I'm a strong-willed person and I cannot be made to do something that I do not want to do. I will not drink the Kool-Aid. I will not ever drink the Kool-Aid.
Tarek, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Al, you should vote for me, because as I mentioned earlier very poorly, I represent a big faction of the town. My parents, to this day, still live paycheck to paycheck, so I know economically disadvantaged, I definitely fit into that from birth till today. I, English language learner. I might not have struggled, because my parents pushed learning English more than anything in the world, so I didn't struggle, but I know what it is to have a lot of friends who struggled learning English. And I have the drive and passion to do it, because I just love this town and I want to give back to it.
Paycheck to paycheck, maybe, but I bet we get a good feijoada if we come to your office.
Come to my house. Any day you have food.
RJ, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
So I think you should vote for me, because even though I have not served on the committee, I understand the committee's roles, functions, and responsibilities by sitting in meetings for a year and a half as a student, filming them for our cable station. On top of that, I've been very involved in town within like, you know, the last five years since filming them. I got to know a lot of people in town, I got to know a lot of the issues, and I think I'm very knowledgeable of those issues. I think I'm driven to make a difference and I'm really, really passionate about the success that our students have in our school systems. And I would make sure that, you know, that happens if I were to be elected. So I would ask for your vote.
Justin, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
Well, Al, I'm running to hit the ground running. I'm the candidate with the experience in education. I studied it in college, I subsequently taught here in Milford, I served on the School Improvement Council at the high school, and I've worked in a superintendent's office for three years, serving both the superintendent and the school committee. And I have the passion and I care about this town very deeply. It did a lot for me as I was growing up and now I want to give it back to it. I want to make sure that the kids today and tomorrow have the same opportunities I was presented with. So really, if you're going to vote for me, it's going to be a vote for the future.
Jim, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
Thank you. I'm looking for the opportunity to continue to be collaborative and work in a cross-functional manner in order to promote and push forward the brand for Milford Public Schools.
And as always, to our six loyal viewers, maybe a couple extra now, thank you for joining. I'll never ask you, as I've said before, to vote for a specific candidate. I will beg you to vote. Pick a candidate, or two in this case, two for the Milford School Committee, that you feel best represents your views and will best develop the programs for your children. And for people like me, my children are 42 or 4,400, somewhere in that range.
Forty-four.
Forty-four hundred.